Hi, good afternoon and welcome to Hardin County Commissioners' Court. Today is Wednesday, August 21st. It is 1:30 PM. All members of the Court present and this meeting is called to order. Everyone please rise to the invocation by Commissioner Roberts, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good gracious to the Father. Thank you for all the many blessings you've given us. Watch over and guide us and direct us as we go about the minutes and meeting of this Court. In your name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, we're here today to conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed tax rate for the year 2019. The Commissioners' Court met and set the proposed tax rate of .5800 on July the 30th. Since that time, we had at our regular meeting on August the 13th, we set two public hearings. First one is set for today at 1:30 and the second one, I believe, is on August the 27th at 9:00 AM. Is that correct?
9:30.
9:30 AM. A notice was published in the CLSBB, that is our legal publication for all legal notices for the county. That notice was published by Ms. Shirley Cook, the taxes assessor collector. Thank you, Ms. Cook, for doing so. The notice that I have pulled up is slightly different from the one that was published in the paper on August the 14th and everybody should have a copy of it in front of you. Basically, the second paragraph where it talks about the tax rate increase, I want to read that to you because the notice that will go in the paper today will state, "The governing body of Hardin County proposes to use revenue attributable to the tax rate increase over the effective tax rate for the purposes of..." The previous notice did not have anything after this. The notice that's published today will state, "Added local law enforcement, additional county personnel maintaining existing service levels and to provide resources needed for daily operations." Ms. Cook has checked to make sure, since the rate is actually not increasing, nothing actually had to be placed there. However, we did have a citizen that made a comment that we were trying to hide something by not putting anything regarding the tax rate increase. And again, it's not an increase, it's a decrease, but it is an increase over the effective tax rate. So, Ms. Cook and I discussed making this change to the notice just to make it more accurate and hopefully satisfy any questions that the citizens may have about the tax rate for the county. The current tax rate, as everybody will see, currently for 2018 is .8, I'm sorry, .58500 per $100 valuation. The proposed tax rate is a half cent less at .5800 per $100 valuation. The effective tax rate for 2019 is .543635 per $100 and the rollback tax rate is .587917 per $100. So, we are proposing to set a tax rate at approximately 79 cents lower than the rollback tax rate. Something we really haven't discussed much in open meeting and I've been weary to do so because I don't have myself educated well enough, but everybody knows that next year that rollback rate is going to drop drastically. I had Ms. Cook do some figuring for us. I don't remember the exact rate, but if I remember right, it's around 55, .556 would have been our rollback rate for this year and that would have been a loss of $987,000 in revenue. So, that's the kind of thing that worries me about next year that we're going to face and without really knowing all of the details of this new legislation that's come about regarding the rollback rate. I did talk to James White about it. He says there's lots of ifs, ands, or buts about it. One of the ifs, ands, or buts about it is if we are still under a governor's disaster declaration for Harvey or God forbid if we have another disaster between now and then and if we're under a disaster declaration, then the rollback rate stays at the 8% cap. However, I believe that we're probably looking at that 3.5% cap for next year and something that we're going to have to prepare and plan for. The notice that's published in the paper is in your packets there. I've also got a screen from the visitors that are here. It talks about how to calculate your tax rate using the evaluation that you receive from the appraisal district. One other item that I thought was interesting that you have in your package that I wanted to bring up during this public hearing today, the tax rate that we have proposed to set for 2019 is the same tax rate that was set by the Hardin County Commissioners' Court in 2003. In 2003, which was fiscal year 2004, .5800 was the tax rate set for that year and here we are, many years later, sitting in the same tax rate. Mr. Pelt was here back in 2003.
Yeah, four years, five years before that.
Nobody has really given me any written comments regarding the tax rate, but I probably had six or seven citizens approach me about it. Three of them was at the funeral of Judge Caraway. All of them have been along the lines of that were crazy for going down the tax rate. One gentleman at the funeral of Judge Caraway told me we were stupid for going down the tax rate and asked me that I know what happened many years back when they dropped the tax rate so many points and how hard it's been to overcome that. Those are the only comments that I've received so far. We have, I posted this hearing today on my Facebook page, there's been a few comments on there. Two of those that I wanted to bring up in here is that they're not happy that we're having these meetings during business hours. They think that we should have them after hours. These are set. I don't think that we, if we're going to adopt the tax rate in the budget on September 10th, I don't think that we can schedule another evening meeting, but if that's something the Court wants to entertain, we'll certainly look at that. And this is my fifth year to have to have public hearings on the tax rate and this is the third citizen that's ever come to me and asked us about consider setting these meetings in the evening time. With that said, I'd open the floor to any comments by the Commissioners, starting with Commissioner Cooper.
Oh, thank you Judge. Like you, I have not had any citizens' response to our action for our proposal to cut the tax rate. Other than, they say that we should never cut the tax rate, it should stay the same. I'm sure there are citizens out there that have a different opinion, yet I have not heard from them. I think it's a good thing for anybody that is watching this recording later or that's seasoned in the paper because of the comments you may want to go about a citizen saying that we're raising the tax rate. I think it's a good thing to look at. The preceding year's tax rate was .585 and the proposed tax rate is 580. I graduated from CLSBH high school and it looks to me like that's a reduction.
It is.
So...
But that wording comes, it's a template that Ms. Cook has from her software and it said increase in there. And then after the word increase, or where I showed you earlier that it didn't say anything, the reason it didn't say anything is because it's not an increase. But that's why she and I talked and decided to add the additional wording. The increase is over the effective tax rate and the use for the increase, if you want to call it that, for the reasons that were listed there.
I have the same opinion as the citizen that I heard from that once we get a tax rate to a certain point, it's not wise to lower it. I went along with the recommendation on the proposed tax rate simply because of the legislation that came out of this year's session for the rollback tax that's going to affect next year. I'm like you, I think probably we will be over that and my opinion is if we went to a rollback vote, the citizens would never vote an increase in. Commissioner Kirkendall had a recommendation last court of meeting in the middle and going .5825. I'm all for that. Whatever this court decides to do, I'll go along with it. I think there's pros and cons on either way we go, leaving it where we're at, reducing it to what the proposed is or meeting in the middle. So, I have an open mind to what this court would like to do and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper. Commissioner Kirkendall?
Yes, sir. I believe with the factor of the unknown of what the legislature has done to counties by not listening to us, we, you know, to all 254 counties contacted our leadership in Austin and all turned a deaf ear to it. I believe even the 5850 is reasonable. I've not had one request to lower it below 5850. However, I've had several businessmen who own businesses in the county and in the city request that we not drop services when we reduce the rate. And so, my concern is, is that we would have to reduce services and then especially in the road and bridge budget. In my second term, my budget was cut by $100,000 annually, which accumulatively is $400,000 over a term. The citizens were not happy. When they called us, they expect us to come and clean ditches and outfalls and to fix their roads, not just patch with patch mix. Now that we've got it back, I'm afraid that the Court's going to expect Commissioners to cut their budgets again. And what I'd like to say is, I think we sent the wrong message to the public that we have expendable income in our budgets that if a drastic cut has to happen, then we have too much money anyway and I don't think we've ever had enough in our budgets in order to effectively do what we're required to do as Commissioners now. And saying that, I'm concerned that if I had to take another $100,000 cut in my budget, it's going to, it's going to send a mixed message that I do care about my precinct and I do want to respond to needs, but my hands will be strapped financially and I don't want to send a mixed message. I think part of conservative leadership is effective and efficient services and that we have to look toward the future. Having a $1.8 million project ahead of us to bring the courthouse HBAC up to date, lighting up to date, I cannot see where, in good conscience, we would be doing the citizens a favor by lowering it to 58 and not staying with the 5850. I would entertain staying at 5850 or 5825, but I think it's unwise to go with 58. And so, that's, those are my thoughts, Judge. I think we have proven to the citizens that we're conservative and that we really try to watch over the things that we're given. Anytime we have to respond to a disaster, we've done well. I'd hate to see us get in a bind and be like other counties surrounding us who cannot respond because we made unwise decisions. And so, those are my thoughts and I appreciate everybody on the Court.
Thank you, Commissioner Kirkendall.
Could I say, could I add one thing Judge before we move on?
No, please do.
And the sheriff is not the one that informed me on this, but I have been told third party that the sheriff is not getting cooperation from other entities on matching for a new dispatcher because we lowered, we recommended a proposed tax rate that is lower. So, I think that has caused a burden on the sheriff as well. I just want that on the record.
I've heard that too, Commissioner.
It has and the sheriff's here, if he'd like to speak on it, he can. That was not the only reason, but that was part of the reason that at least two of the five entities that share those dispatching services, two of the reasons that they gave was, "Well, you lowered the tax rate, so you almost can afford it."
So, we must, right.
So, why do we, why do you want us to pay for it? So, Mr. Pelt?
Well, I'd like to go back and address the first comment about you should never lower a tax rate. And I'm going back to 2007. Whoever said that wasn't sitting on this Court. That was a time that in Hardin County, because of 3D seismic, there was tremendous amounts of natural gas discovered and we took in over a period of just several years, something like $6 million above what our budgets had been. We accumulated a great surplus. If we had not cut the tax rates, we would have been way over the effective tax rates. And we managed to do several things out of cash revenues. If we had not cut the tax rates, I guess it'd been great to have all the money, but the people that I was talking to, they wanted their taxes cut. Now, I know every Commissioner on here has a road and bridge budget. Chris and I have the largest road and bridge precincts. I unfortunately have 52% of the county. He has the most roads. But I have Sour Lake and I have Coons, two incorporated areas in my precinct. I ran the figures one time, there's something like 25% of the voters in Precinct 3 that live on county roads. The rest live only either in cities, state highways, or private roads, which we do nothing for them, basically. They pay taxes. You don't attend a city meeting that they don't remind you, the citizens of Sour Lake and Coons, that they pay the same road and bridge tax as the people who live on a county road, yet they don't receive benefits from it. Now, Chris has a different situation because he does not represent a incorporated town in his precinct. But everyone has to look at that and I make many, many talks to civic clubs and things like this and I don't have anyone coming up to me telling me they want to pay more And the half cent deal that we're talking about is, it's not that much money. But to me, it was a principle of it with the appraisals that the people are getting this year that have jumped their appraised values up. It did not make sense to me to push the rollback rate or the tax rate right up to the rollback rate when we're only talking about $150,000 on a $22 million budget or something. But I think you can look at what the judge has handled out since 2004 and this Court has kept the taxes as low as practical, not as low as possible, but as low as practical. We started raising the taxes back from the low of 53 cents, which we held 55 cents for several years, when the legislature in its wisdom changed the formula for oil and gas. And in the next five years, they cost us about $6 million because they did not know what they were doing really. And they went for a bill proposed by the oil companies and oil companies don't propose bills that will cost them money. So, that's, that's where we are and that's the reason it was up and down. This Court has been a conservative Court and I think you have to keep in mind a lot of these things, that we do serve a diverse population. Road and bridge unfortunately does not represent the people on county roads that we maintain, do not represent the bulk of the population in Hardin County. And if you ever forget that, I think the voters will remind you of it. So, I'm satisfied this Court has managed this county wisely, they spent money conservatively. Now, this 3.5% cap that we're coming into is going to be a problem. And it's going to be a problem because we continue to have increasing expenses as people move out from Jefferson County and yet we're not gaining appraised values like Jefferson County is. So, it's going to be very difficult, but I'm satisfied where it is. Now, if the majority of the Court feels we need to put the half cent back, I'm not going to fight it. But I don't think it makes that much difference in a $22 million budget, which what, 17 million, I would just local and the rest I would do grants and stuff. But I appreciate the Court, how this Court reacts and handles every problem. We discuss them in a sane manner. We arrived at a decision that we feel is best for the taxpayers across the board. This Court has a good reputation and I'm very pleased, appreciate everything the judge has done. This has been a tough budget to put together. It'll be tougher next year. I do not know why the wisdom of the state legislature was to put us under 3.5 cent caps when if they did what the Supreme Court has ordered them to do for eight times and they came in and took up the cost of education as the Texas Constitution says they could and people got the $1.45 or $1.50 off their backs, then you could raise city and county taxes to afford the services that the people need and you would not be held to such a restraints as we're on, as we are now. But the legislature did. I don't think they'll leave them there for long, but they did. And, but they pass us mandates down to us, they cut our ability to raise money funds and yet the big money comes out of the cities like Houston, Dallas, Fort Worth, San Antonio, and Austin. That's where the big money is. And yet they expect our schools to educate people and well over half the people that we educate with local taxpayers will make their contributions in one of these big cities. And the rural areas are taking it on the chin, law enforcement's taking on the chin because we're dealing with the move out mainly in Jefferson County and Jefferson County is fixing to pick up probably $40 billion worth of valuations in the next five years, but we don't get any of that. And our people, they work there, they shop there, but they live here and we have to meet the needs that they have. But I appreciate this Court.
Thank you, Commissioner Pelt. Mr. Roberts?
Um, I'm along the lines of everybody on the Court, actually. We, since I've been on the Court, I think we've done a real good job of keeping the budget at where it is and, and keeping the taxes at a certain rate. I think a lot to be understood from what I've been reading on, on, you know, the Texas pages that I read. A lot of the counties are bumping their, bumping, bumping their rates up because of the rollback and we're not. And, and they're doing it because of that, so their citizens are really fixing to be stuck with higher taxes. And once again, like Ken said, like Chris said, and like Commissioner Cooper said, this is the state doing this to us. And the citizenry in our Hardin County needs to understand, it's not us, it's the state. We're mandated to do things by the state that cost us money. The other part to that is, everything costs more. It costs more every day to work and, and do our jobs, you know, our, our insurance is going up 2.5%. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
And everything else, the other things that have been mandated that we're having to pay out this year is, is another burden on us. You know, it's going to get to a point where somebody's going to have to come through, but the other point to that, just what Commissioner Pelt said, our taxes are not that bad compared to if you really, we get blamed for the, because we collect the taxes, we get blamed for the school district, we get blamed for Lumberton Mud, but that's different entities and we're just collecting the taxes for them. But our county taxes are considerably lower than either one of those. I don't know what the answer is in the long term. As long as, as long as we've got those people in Austin doing what they did to us this time, it's not a good, it's not a good ride.
They, next year, instead of it being called the rollback rate, it's going to be called the no new revenue rate.
Exactly.
So, and that, that's, that's what the legislation calls it and that, that sounds good to the public that the county's not going to get any new revenue or the city or whoever. Right, they'll get to vote and I feel like that's what we'll have to go through next year is an election on, on the tax rate. I hate to say we'll worry about that next year, but hopefully we're all better educated as to exactly what is going to take place and, and we'll figure out how we're going to work through it.
Well, Ken used two words together, but probably he shouldn't and that's wisdom and state legislature.
That brings up a point, Chris, and I think the public is not aware of this. By state law, every year in road and bridge, we're mandated to file a road report and estimate how much money it would take to put the roads in our precinct in good repair. This past year, I don't remember what Chris's was, mine was over $5 million. It would take $5 million to put the roads in my precinct in good repair.
Mine was about $7 million.
Yeah, yours was about $7. My total budget for the year is like 1.3 something and that includes everything. All the amount that is available to put the roads in good repair materials and stuff is something like $480,000. It would take every bit of my budget for 10 years just to do what they, the state says and we have to turn these reports in. But the key, long term, is a state taking over its responsibilities, constitutional responsibility with the schools so it frees up some money so that counties and cities can do what they're obligated to do or need to do. I don't foresee it happening, but that's what they need to do.
Thanks to everyone for your comments. Does anybody in the audience have any comments they'd like to make regarding the proposed tax rate of .5800 for 2019? Ms. Turk, come on up to the podium.
Number one, I would like to congratulate everyone on the Court because we've had a absolutely devastating year across Hardin County to deal with and many of you have had 24/7 to deal with your constituents and I'd particularly like to compliment Judge McDaniel because I happen to know that he has done many, many extraordinary things over and above the line of duty to help people. I am deeply concerned about what is happening with the Texas Legislature and what is happening next year as well as what they've put on top of us this year. And the reason is, I sat in on a hearing last night with our Hardin County WCID number one who have been struggling with getting insurance money, FEMA money, getting things back and redoing things in our, in our particular neighborhood that was devastated. And this came up because of the 3.5% and then what was happening in this coming year. So, I, I truly, truly am concerned about it and I hope you guys think carefully across the board, even though it is a very small reduction and it's been mentioned that it's not a lot of money, I'm very concerned that we don't come up with some emergency or some deficit and things that we're not able to truly deal with what's going on. I, I did have a copy of the budget. I looked at, Alvin, I looked at y'all's road and bridge fund and Kenneth and Chris and you, Mr. Cooper, and that's just flat out not enough money in the road and bridge fund for, for truly, properly being able to take, take, take care of, of the roads that you guys have in, in your, in your various districts and, but anyway, let me close by saying, because I don't want to go on and on and on, but I am deeply concerned about what's happening with the Texas Legislature. I think it, it was very short sighted and I know all of you do as well and I think you mentioned, Chris, that you guys had sent in comments to, to them not to do that, but I don't want you all to, to shortchange the Commissioners' Court and the, the, the future and not, and be, be looking at what's going to happen next year to y'all. So, anyway, thank you, thank you, thank you for all your hard work and the many hours it takes to put a budget like this together.
Thank you, Ms. Turk. Thank you, Ms. Turk.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments? Ms. Cook?
Is this recorded?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I thought that this, one thing might be helpful is to read this statement about what the effective tax rate and what the rollback tax rate. And you probably have that paper, but the effective tax rate is the total tax rate needed to raise the same amount of property tax revenue for Hardin County from the same properties in both 18 tax year and 19 tax year. For the public, whoever would be listening or watching, the rollback tax rate is the highest tax rate that Hardin County may adopt before voters are entitled to petition for an election to limit the rate that may be approved to the rollback rate, which as you already mentioned, the rollback rate will be changed, the name will not be called that. It'll be hard thing for us to get used to. Voter approved, I believe is another phrase. There has been a little confusion about the phrase that was in the paper or not in the paper that because we are not going, or what is proposed is not going over last year's rate. that because we are not going, or what is proposed is not going over last year's rate. If the public could understand that, it's not going over that. But it is over the effective rate, which you corrected in that statement. Our software provider, which is generated, developed by tax attorneys, so they, at, after...
If you were there as attorneys.
That is true, but they waited on legislation to be complete before they, you know, opened it for us to, we use the same software every year, so that they would have us updated and we would have it exactly, the wording would be correct on, you know, we put in our values and all the information. So I think the court is, is very conservative. I appreciate that as a taxpayer myself. But I do know also that everybody needs to do their part and as a taxpayer. I'm willing to do my part if it's a five dollar increase on my tax bill or whatever. Ultimately, what's going to be the result is the taxpayers, when they get that bill, that's what they, they maybe don't understand rollback rate or effective tax rate. I wouldn't either if I wasn't in this position. It's not an easy thing to understand. But the legislation changes were reflected in our software this year, and they will be next year. And I also have concerns for next year, as we did our estimate calculations and present, that you requested. So I appreciate you all, and if I can do anything, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Turk. Anyone else have any comments? If not, I just want to remind everybody, we will have another public hearing. It'll be, I just had it in front of me, let's see, what's the date? The 27th at 9:30 a.m., and on that public hearing, we discuss the 20 budget as well as the 19 tax rate at the same time. And hopefully we won't have to repeat everything we said today again.
I, I would entertain, Judge, I know we can't take action, but I would entertain staying at 5850 and 5825 after today's hearing for our budget.
And I would, my opinion on that is that we've already put it out that it would be .5800. And I think if we try to take it back up, that would, I think we'd have a room full at the next hearing if we decided to try to do that. And, and just to make sure the court knows, like I've told you, but if not, let's make sure, you know, now, the, the, the proposed budget that was filed on July the 31st had a deficit of 97,500. I have worked with Angela, we've, the sheriff had pulled the extra dispatcher which removed some of that addition that was in the budget, and I've made some other adjustments to that budget and gotten it to zero. So I, while I don't think it's a bad idea, I think it's a great idea if we, if we had, and it's my fault. I, I proposed a .5800 tax rate based on the information that I had. Everybody went along with that, and I think to change it now would be a mistake.
Judge, I'd like to make one more comment so that, because we are a rural county. And I must say that our rural legislators, our representative senators have been good to work with us. But what a lot of people do not understand is, like Houston, Houston controls nearly half the legislature. The elected members of the House are represented and the Senate. And when you take Houston, Dallas, Fort Worth, Austin, San Antonio, put them together, they control the legislature. And they're, this is not going to change, and they set the laws. Our legislators can, you know, vote however they want to vote on an issue. But when it comes right down to it, the big boys are setting the laws for the state of Texas, and we have to live by them.
And I would like to add to that, I don't believe our legislators, our Senator or representative, listen to us. I had many conversations with our representative, and I think he listens to his House leadership over his constituents. And I think that needs to be said. I had a phone call with him, and I, and I explained to him, I said, Representative, you're going to cause a great division between your county government supporting of you and, and what y'all have done because you didn't listen to us. And I don't feel like that's our fault. I think the explanation for what's going to happen is the fact they didn't listen. And I don't feel like that we've had Senator Nichols' support. And I've gone record for saying that, he shows up and takes photographs, and he pulls about 85% of the vote here, but I don't see one thing that he has done to help Harden County. And, and I have supported him in the past, but I've lost a great deal of respect for him during this last budget.
Well, I, I would have to say this, Chris, that when you're in the minority up there, you can do a grandstand vote if you want to for your people. But behind the scenes, if you're going to get anything, you've got to, you've got to work with those city legislators. And our representatives are not in an easy position. It's just a fact of life that sometime you have to work with the opposition to get anything done for your people. They're in a tough position up there. Maybe not as tough as we are, I don't know, but they're in a tough position.
I bet they'd disagree.
Huh?
I bet they would disagree that theirs is not as tough as ours.
Well, it may be tougher, I don't know. Well, none of it's easy, none of it's easy, but unfortunately, we're in a, for a long time, the rural areas, and Jeanie can remember this, we own the Speaker of the House, we own the lieutenant governorship and the governors and stuff. We're not there, we're not there. Whether you're talking about the governor or whoever, there's a lot of things they do, me every, they, they do every day. I'm displeased with, but I understand they have to count noses to get votes. I move adjourned.
Say, a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourn. Thank you all for your time.
Yes, sir.
Chris, you mentioned that, you had to deal with 600 tons over.